Ms. Corble?
Here.
Mr. Solapis?
Here.
Mr. Mills?
Here.
Mr. Wiley?
Here.
Mr. Waldinger?
Here.
Can I get a motion to approve the April 11th regular meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion that the minutes of the April 11th, 2024 meeting be approved as written.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any public comments on items that are not on the agenda? Please come up, introduce yourself, write your [inaudible].
Is there a kind of a pencil?
Yeah, there should be pens up there.
I have, thanks. My name's Lori Swersler. Do you need to know where I live or just my?
Yeah, what's your address?
It's 222 McNary Street.
Okay.
Just a question, at the last planning commission meeting, the nursing home guy was here and his plans were tabled.
Okay.
And is like, and I just thought that they were going to be at this meeting because it was tabled until the next meeting. What's the timeline that they have to like submit plans and stuff's tabled, then it's just like going on forever and ever?
Once a plan is received, a 90-day clock starts at the next planning commission meeting. They is if 90 days, they are owed in a decision from council by that date.
By council, so that means it has to go through planning commission and council?
Yes, and that's why we get the request for time extension and it's up to council. Council's the one that decides if they want to grant that time extension or if they feel it's not ready, they'll deny it or they'll approve it.
So that's going to be at the next council meeting?
They will be at the next planning commission meeting because they're doing a revision. I've been in contact with the applicants there. They will have it, they've indicated to me they would like to be on the June meeting.
Okay.
Which is June 13th and then their 90-day clock doesn't run up until sometime in July.
Okay.
And if it doesn't get, if it doesn't get through the process by the, if it's not to council by the end of June, we'll likely say you either need to make a decision or request a time extension.
Well, how many time extensions do they get because they're only getting one?
It's up to council.
Oh, okay.
It's up to council, it's at their discretion to accept a time extension request.
So this can just like go on forever and ever?
I mean, in theory, but I think at a certain point, council's going to be like, you need to either get this together or not.
All right.
Ma'am, you could always just instead of waste your time during the meeting, just call staff during the meeting.
Okay, yeah, I was, okay, because I was like, I thought they were going to be here and, okay, thank you.
Any people in the audience about items not on the agenda? Okay, no, oh, come on, officer, introduce yourself, Rachel, name and address.
Yes, my name is Eric Perry. I live at 326 Pleasant Avenue. And my comments tonight pertain mainly to issues with traffic in and out for the development, which I guess is now called Pleasant Point.
Well, sir, that is an item on this agenda. We have to do the presentation first, you come back after.
All right.
All right, sorry about that. And sir, we'll bring you up first to comment after they present. You guys, with new business, Zahalski Land Development, consideration of application for preliminary land development, Aaron Nemus LLC for the Zahalski Land Development located 265 East McMurray Road.
Yes, so what you have before you is a land development plan. This was a plan that was submitted April 8th for 88 townhomes that are situated on two parcels or a portion thereof. The total development area is roughly 19 acres. But before we get into that, I thought we should actually look at some of the background behind these properties. Many of us have been here before discussing different aspects. So real quickly, yes, as it stands today, the property is currently zoned as low-density residential. However, as many of you may remember, on April 22nd, two or three weeks ago, it was rezoned to mixed residential overlay for development site. However, as noted on the first bullet there at the top, on April 8th, they had already submitted plans for what you see here. So we'll be following the mixed residential overlay zoning district.
I think it was the reverse of the zoning and rezoning.
Yeah.
It's now currently.
It's currently low density, you're saying was rezoned from other.
I'm removing the overlay.
They removed the mixed residential overlay.
So it's only low-density residential?
Correct, sorry, I apologize.
It's all right.
But a couple of other actions that have been taken relative to this parcel in addition to the rezoning has to do with, as was noted here during the open comment period, there is a subdivision plan before us at a previous meeting. It'll be back before us in June. And the point of that subdivision was to subdivide one of the parcels into two. However, based on comments, it's been determined that the subdivision plan should be a subdivision and lot consolidation plan that covers both this parcel as well as the one where the nursing home is proposed, with the idea that you would then create two distinct parcels, one for the, what we call a group living facility type B, and the other for this particular development, which we've been calling Pleasant Point. And prior to that, there was a special exception that was reviewed and approved by the zoning hearing board about a year ago in 2023. And that was for the western portion of the lot just outside and put adjacent to this development site. And that was for the lot to be developed as potentially a group living facility type B. So looking at the existing conditions of the site, you can see there's the two parcels in question, parcel A and parcel B. So the development site, there we go, takes up the entirety of parcel B, including the five additional parcels down here along East McMurray, and then a portion of what we have been calling parcel A. The site is largely vacant with some existing vegetation and there is an existing single-family home located right about here on the lot, right where it says 1120. That is accessed off of Marion Drive. The surrounding uses mainly on pretty much three sides of these tracts of land are low-density residential, both in terms of zoning and in terms of land use. Now, to the south, directly adjacent to the site, we have the Peters Township Fire Department station. As well as across from East McMurray, we have a handful of different types of uses being mixed residential as well as commercial uses. Access into the development area, the existing site would either be from a combination of access from Pleasant Avenue, Crest Drive, Marion Drive, and/or East McMurray Road. I'll also note that the site does contain steep to moderate slopes, moderate to steep slopes. And there is an existing drainage way that runs approximately through this side, western side of the development area. So in regards to the proposed development, as I noted in the summary there on first slide, it is 88 townhomes. Each of the townhome buildings consists of anywhere from two to five units in each building. Each of those units will have its own access, accessing directly onto the street. Traffic in and out of the development site will be by the extension of two existing roads, the first being Pleasant Avenue. There we go, Pleasant Avenue heading south to East McMurray, as well as Marion Drive extending west over to the development site to the west of this parcel. There are two stormwater facilities proposed. We have one located right here and then the larger one down in the bottom corner of the development site. All utilities are proposed to be underground and the applicant is proposing that this be done in two phases. The phasing line being roughly right here, this dark line. What that would be is first phase would be northern portion here, approximately 76 townhome units. And the second phase would be to the south there along East McMurray and that would be for the 12 additional units, as well as the access to East McMurray. So how this looks in terms of our zoning ordinance, our zoning requirements and land development requirements, we did note, as you can see in your review letters that you have, both from our staff as well as our consultants, there are a number of deficiencies or additional information that we need. The buildings are too close to the street, so they don't meet the front setback requirement. We were, we are not able to tell what the, whether or not they'll meet the maximum building height. We need renderings for that. We also need the maximum lot coverage of the site calculated. The minimum open space, we require 10%. That has yet to be designated on the plans themselves. And there's also a requirement for buffer yards around the development, which they show currently no landscaping as of yet. A couple of other requirements of the mixed residential overlay ordinance is that it does require a mix of type of units. And in this case, for this particular property, two different types of dwellings are required to be provided. They do in fact do that, they do have a duplex, or two duplexes, I forget, as well as a bunch of townhomes. So they meet that portion of the requirement. However, there's a minimum required percentage for each housing type, which means you need to have either 25% of your total units need to be townhomes or duplexes or whatever other type of housing you have. Obviously, they don't meet that since they only have 2.3% of their units are of a different housing type. And I'll also note, we do have some issues determining whether or not they meet their parking requirements. While they do have driveways, they're not wide enough for two vehicles. So the question is whether or not they're also providing parking internally in terms of a garage. So we'll need some additional information on that. Additionally, as I noted earlier with maximum building height, we do need architectural renderings. And this helps us to determine whether or not they're going to meet the building design standards. Another requirement that we have in this particular zoning district has to do with the streetscape and that the ordinance intends that there be some landscaping and streetlights. And we don't have enough documentation to determine whether or not they're providing for that. I'm looking at in terms of transportation, we do need some additional documentation regarding their HOP, which will be required, a highway occupancy permit will be required for their connection to East McMurray. While we don't have any of the relevant information for that, I will note we are meeting in approximately two weeks for a scoping meeting to begin that process. We also will be requiring a traffic impact study for the development, which has not been provided as of yet. And one important point that I want to point out is that in our zoning ordinance, we do, the township does have the right to determine what gets built in which phase. And in this case, staff is strongly recommending to the planning commission that they make the recommendation to council that the access to East McMurray be provided in phase one. And I'll also note in regards to stormwater, we still don't have the stormwater management report, which is required. And there's a number of geotech issues that were highlighted in the geotech report that need to be addressed. So given the amount of items that are still outstanding, staff cannot make any type of reasonable recommendation for approval or approval with conditions. Given the extent of the issues that are outstanding, we are recommending that the plan be tabled to give the developer some time to address those conditions. I believe, yeah, that's right there, August 7th is when we need a decision by. So we do have time to come back to the next planning commission meeting to, to address anything, for the applicant to address any of the comments they hear here, as well as the comments that were provided in the letters. But really, tonight's, our intention is to at least get some preliminary feedback from planning commission that they can provide to the developer, as well as any questions that you may have of staff or our consultants here, as well as if they want to have any preliminary feedback from the public.
Can I just ask, this was tabled at last month's meeting as well?
No.
Or no, this is a different, this is a, okay.
Yes.
All right, okay.
Yes, there's a lot going on with these series of parcels.
Okay, okay, so this one has never been tabled before?
And then another iteration was tabled in our last meeting.
I'm looking at the meeting minutes from last month that says Zahalski Plan of Lots and that they.
The Zahalski Plan of Lots is what I refer to as.
Is the other one.
Subdivision Lot Consolidation.
That's the nursing home, right?
Yes.
I'll let that gentleman, we promised him he could go first. I'll let him go and then, yes, I'd be happy to provide some clarification. Thank you. Okay, we told us you were going to go. Okay. To reiterate, I live on Pleasant Avenue adjacent to this proposed development. And I have looked at what was put up online for public inspection. I have some questions, I will say issues about some of what I saw in those plans or preliminary plans. To the point of some questions about the in and out access to be provided through two existing residential streets, Pleasant Avenue and Marion Drive, and whether or not that is really a good idea from a neighborhood standpoint, from a traffic safety standpoint. And I did ask to have some slides put up rather than just talk about the conditions that exist out there. I thought it might be easier for me to raise my points, raise my concerns here. These pictures were taken a couple of days ago, so it's pretty much current in terms of, this is the intersection of the end of Pleasant Avenue, Crest Drive, going left to the right or to the left, excuse me. And there is a residential driveway that comes up and into the street right at this intersection. And the proposed tie-in to the townhomes would be in the area that's now in woods and brush. So it would come up the hill and tie into the, what is currently a three-way intersection, two streets and one driveway. If you go to this corner and you turn onto Crest Drive, this is what you'll see as you look down Crest Drive or look up Crest Drive more correctly. The name of it is actually pretty appropriate because there is a topographic high spot in this street. And if there is traffic coming from the other direction on Crest Drive, it's not immediately visible until it tops the crest of the ridge here, so to speak. So there's an impeded line of vision, if you will. You can only see perhaps 100 to 150 feet up the street as to whether or not anything is coming from the other direction. Go to the next slide, please. Back at the intersection, so the proposed tie-in from the townhomes would come uphill through this currently wooded area and into the existing three-way intersection. This is the driveway, the last house on Pleasant Avenue. And looking at the picture on the right here, just to the left of it, is where the tie-in from the townhomes would come in. And so the people who live in this house, they have to come uphill to get into the street from their driveway. Currently, they have two streets to contend with. If this development goes through, they will have to be looking in three directions to get in and out of their driveway safely. Next slide, please. The other end of Crest Drive, which is only about 100 yards long in total, I think three houses on it. You are at the corner of Crest Drive and Marion Drive, looking back towards the intersection of Pleasant. This is what you see again, a high point in the middle of the street with impeded vision. You can't see really if there's anybody coming from the other direction. As you continue on Crest Drive towards Pleasant, cross the high point on the street and get closer, then finally that intersection comes into view and you can actually see. So my complaint, my concern about this is there's impeded line of sight basically in both directions on Crest Drive. The proposed tie-in from the townhouses, I'm not sure about, but I think there may be impeded line of sight if that street is allowed to tie into this intersection as well. There is a driveway, a residential driveway right at this intersection. That house has been there for 50 to 60 years. This is an established neighborhood. And why should they have to put up with an additional road hazard, bringing another street into this intersection? In addition to that, because the neighborhood area is fairly quiet at this point in terms of traffic, lots, Crest Drive connects Pleasant and Marion, and quite a few people will walk in this area, walk their dogs in this area, including me. It's also used by school buses in the mornings and afternoon, schools in session. They travel on parts of Pleasant, Crest, and Marion Drive. And so the current setup of this three-way intersection, I would describe as kind of awkward. People who live in the area tend to be rather cautious when they come to that and through that intersection. Adding another street in here, I think, is only going to compound the existing issue and take it from awkward to maybe actually dangerous for somebody, both in terms of traffic, what that you can't see, and in terms of the fact that at least now, there's a fair amount of pedestrian traffic. So that is the situation or the current conditions around that intersection. And so I looked at 88 townhomes and I said, well, I'll just divide by threes because there's supposedly going to be three in and outs. And if a third of those townhomes, new residences, use this connection to go in and out, that's roughly 29 households that will now be in the traffic flow along Pleasant Avenue that aren't there now. From end to end on Pleasant Avenue, there are 32 houses currently. And so adding traffic from another 29 households is going to, I can't do a traffic study, that's not my background, but I think I can say with some confidence that there's going to be a significant uptick in the volume of traffic along my street. And then I looked at Marion Drive, one of the other in and out places to be connected in. The section where that would take place is currently a dead end. And I count six houses, I think, in that dead end section. And again, if roughly a third of the townhome households are using Marion as an in and out access, that goes from the street handling basically six households right now to something like maybe 35 in terms of traffic. So again, that strikes me as a pretty significant change in traffic in and out of that development. And the third one connecting into McMurray Road, as you all know, when it was up on that, the fire department is there, the school is there, there are houses, several houses in that vicinity along McMurray Road, as well as a number of businesses. And so I, Pleasant comes to mind first and foremost, since this is just up the street from you, this intersection. But in looking at the topography, the existing layout of the streets, I am extremely skeptical that if you can add in a fourth corner to this intersection, increase the volume of traffic and not create some kind of traffic hazard over and above what already exists there. And so thank you for taking my comments and thank you for putting the slides up for me. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Anybody else in this side want to get up and talk at all? Middle section, next.
Okay. Because I don't really know. No, I can't, I just went to the eye doctor, so I can't really see that. I didn't write my name. I guess, Mike, okay, my name's Jackie Mineweiser. I live at 316 Marion Drive. I live in the dead end part adjacent to the lot in question. And I guess part of it is, I missed last meeting, I apologize, I wasn't, I'm unable to be here. But I know this is a big change from two meetings ago. Because the people I'm talking to told me that this is an, like, there was no issue with townhomes now. Now, I come here tonight and I'm like, we're doing a mixed residential overlay. I don't think the people, I don't think, I think this room would have a very different vibe right now if the people knew what we were involved with right now. They, what I was told from the last meeting is that we voted down that 88 subdivision, the 88 townhomes, and that we were voting for half-acre lots and single-family homes. So that's what I got from the meeting, from what people told me, because I missed the meeting. I come here tonight, they're not here because they think that's what we're going by. And now tonight I come here, we're doing a mixed overlay, and they're not aware of what's going on. They're not, they would be here too to speak. I know they would be here too to speak on their behalf. And so I speak for the people that aren't here because I think right now they're misinformed of what's going on right now. Okay? And that they don't understand that we're still trying to figure out a way to redevelop this land, which we're all in consensus with this gentleman here. The traffic in this area is not good. We talked about this in two meetings ago. We talked about the issues with traffic. We talked about the congestion down on Bay, East McMurray Road with the school, with the fire station. And we're going to add more congestion with all this traffic? So my concern is, what is your, I know you gave us a letter, but it's not really clear on that letter what this meeting was about. And also, the people that are not here are not here because they thought the decision was made to keep those half-acre lots. And now we're back to looking at other situations. So I think the public needs to be better informed, so they're here to protect their interests too. That's what I'm saying right now. Because I know every seat, just like two meetings ago, would be full right now if they knew what we're talking about right now, the proposals that are coming up right now. I know every seat would be full. That's what I said. And I don't know where, I mean, I know you sent a letter, but it's not clear what that, what this was about right now. I know the people, I'm talking to people here right now. They think that this, they think that, they didn't come because they thought it's already been addressed or done with that issue.
Ma'am, I think you're making an excellent point. And I'm going to give Mark an opportunity to better explain to him why this gentleman's here within 88, when this in fact body, as well as council, took action to remove that overlay district and make it half-acre lots.
Thank you.
These residents, unfortunately, however, the applicant proposed to put this so-called plan in.
Mixed overlay or whatever.
The residents do need a better explanation, Mark, and maybe you can explain it.
The previous decision was about the zoning district itself. So the property previously, prior to April 22nd, was zoned mixed residential overlay. That is just, that's just the requirements of, all it is is a district that tells the developer or the owner what you can and cannot do with your property. At the April 22nd meeting, they changed it from mixed residential overlay to low-density, which is that half-acre that you were talking about. So they changed the rules. The problem was that the developer had already submitted a plan for what you see here, which is the 88 townhomes. And that's why we have to review it.
Now, those 88 townhomes were there two meetings ago because I was here two meetings ago. So nothing has changed since two meetings ago.
Again, that was a land development plan. It's different than a zoning district. So the zoning district are the rules and requirements, whereas this is the physical development itself. So we were able to change rules that the developer must abide by if they had developed after we changed them. However, he submitted prior to that. He submitted April 8th. There was nothing changed at that point, he was under the mixed residential overlay district.
I'll have to talk to other people, but my point is, is that this room would be full right now with people that have an interest in what is happening on that property, if they were aware that we are now going back to looking at increasing the number of homes being developed in that area. And that's my point, okay? And I don't think it was, as a public hearing, I don't think it was very public to them, the technicalities that you're referring to, whether it's a zoning meeting or whatever. That's a technicality that we're unaware of being the layman. Thank you.
But if you're going to talk, please come up.
I just have a quick question. So with.
Yeah, you have to come up. We can't.
If it's quick. So with. My name's Julie Horn. I live at 309 Marion on the dead end section. So with the 0.5 acres being voted on and this happening with him submitting this, can this still happen even though the 0.5 acres was voted on?
If this plan makes it through the process, yes. So what could potentially happen is this body can still recommend denial of this plan in the future, as well as council. If that were to happen, all bets are off, it's back to low-density residential and it cannot be this development.
So it's a timeline thing? So what it is, is at the time that he submitted his plan, it was not a half-acre residential requirement. It was the mixed overlay. So all like the laws were like, we have to follow and follow what the zoning ordinance says at the. says at the time. So at the time he submitted that, it was still designated as mixed overlay. After he submitted that, so that's like, that's April 8th, you said, right? So then after that was submitted, because nothing had been passed, council went through and redesignated or rezoned it to back to the half acre lots you're talking about. But that can only take effect, right, for anything that would happen after to that date. So the rules that people have to follow have to happen after that. So then we go through this process now, and if everything works out and he complies and it would pass, then yes, this could go, because you're looking at it from the date that what it was, what the law was basically, what the rules were as of the day he submitted. If for whatever reason, after it goes through this process, we recommend denying or approving, and then it goes to council, and then they either pass it or bring it down. If it would pass, then yes, because of where this was when he filed, it would go through. But if it would get voted down, because there was noncompliance, things like that that come through, and they vote it down, then there's other things that could happen. But if somebody else, or if it was resubmitted as a new plan after that, then it would have to be under the .5. So we as a governing body, and council as a governing body, have to follow whatever rule was in place on the date that the application was filed.
So the majority of people that were here at that meeting where it was voted think that this is not happening, like 100%, because that's why there's no one here. So I think that you guys need to do something to let them know that this still can happen, because that's why there's no one here today, to speak about this. Because I spoke to many neighbors and they're like, oh, well, I don't think this can happen. And that's why there's no one here, because no one wants this. Absolutely no one wants this at all. And that's why there's no one here, because they think this is not happening anymore. So I think you guys need to do something to let them know that this still could happen. Because it was not communicated properly. That letter that I got from April 25th made zero sense. I read it 25 times, took pictures of it, sent it to my neighbors, asked people that I used to work with that know stuff about this, and was like, does this make sense to you? They're like, nope, have no clue.
Okay.
So can you please do something better to make sure this makes sense to us? Because this was my fourth letter I've got since I've lived here in two years.
Thank you.
Please, thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Mark Sorrelli. I'm a resident township, and I also am a property owner on East McMurray Road. I'm not here to oppose anything tonight, I'm just here really to gather some information, learn a little bit more about the project. I have been studying the traffic there for the last 25 years, so I do have some familiarity with what's going on on East McMurray Road. Where exactly on East McMurray Road is the access across, just so I have a better understanding in regard to the fire station?
This. Well, it's across, it's across from, written the lines up with its school's driveway.
The first school driveway or the second?
The main driveway, I guess I'm calling.
Main entrance.
Main entrance.
Okay. Yeah, I guess my only concern, again, I expected over time that this property would eventually be developed, it's been on the market for a long time. My only concern, just on that corridor of small business, is this stormwater runoff, which I guess you mentioned that there's a plan that will be at least discussed.
We need to have a plan to be discussed, we haven't even received one yet.
Okay. And the other thing is, is that the speed of traffic, especially as it comes around the curve there of the fire station, I mean, it's, a lot of kids walk down East McMurray Road, they cross our parking lots, they go down to the crossroads. So I think that that should be a consideration, that's looked at, safety of pedestrians, especially having a new entry point onto that road without sidewalks or speed bumps or something like that that might improve neighborhood safety. That's really all I had to say, but I just wanted to learn where this was happening. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Officer, please introduce yourself.
Hi. My name's Jim McLaughlin, I live on Pleasant Avenue. I had a list of concerns that Mark addressed with what we could call holes in the plan. On the geotechnics, there may be wastewater, the sewage, I had a hole, but there's no sense going into it because you guys have identified that. Talk a little bit about the notification. I got an email, or I got a mail, a letter in the mail nine days ago to be here. That's kind of quick. Gloria was talking about the timeline, I'm trying to figure out the timeline too, because the original letter that I received was during COVID. And we talked about having a virtual meeting. I've been here at about 88 townhouses for four years. You're saying 90 days, Jim? When is this going to end? Here's what I've noticed. Here's what I've noticed. Houses are being sold in my neighborhood constantly. We have new neighbors, neighbor to neighbor. Well, you know why? They're getting a letter and they're going, we got to go. Because our property values are going to drop. There's going to be a three-year-long plane crash into a train wreck with traffic, trees being removed, rocks being removed, dirt being removed, building materials going in. This is 60-year-old neighborhood. They didn't develop that land originally. And that's some of the stuff we'll talk about when we see an actual geotechnic report. The traffic impact study, how are we four years into this without one? How are we four years into this with no traffic impact study, with nobody talking about what's going to happen to emergency responses with ambulance and the fire department? You're going to have a flagger out there. Stop, we're going to bring this truck out, we're going to bring these 40 acres of trees out. Stop here for a minute. Oh, the fire truck needs, oh no, we can't do that. Zeholsky wants to build 88 townhouses. So what's going to happen, does everybody in Peterstownship have to run the risk of slow emergency responses because of this? And how much more time is, I want an answer to this, how much more time is this going to go on? How much more time? This is four years. Does anybody know? Is this going to be another 90 days? Nobody knows? All right. There's not retrospect for the current residents? Not much. You've sent me, it was before you. Who was before you?
Well, it would be Seth.
Seth.
And Orham.
Yeah, it was Orham, the other guy.
Ed Zook.
Ed Zook. I've been in 90 years, I've stacked the letters. All kinds, I think there's eight houses between up McNary and on to 300 block of Pleasant that have sold. And the new people come in and go, what's his? That's a heck of a way to live. So something timely. We're busy, we have lives, we have family, we have property. We've been here, we're the residents. So it's a future residence, it's us now. So let's figure out a timeline, like better communication. These people are right. What happened was, he supplied the plans on the morning of the council meeting on April 8th. Council voted to table it for two weeks, then they voted against it, and he was grandfathered in. That's what happened.
Well, regardless if they would have voted on.
Well, and it wouldn't have made a difference because he was in, I get it. I know, I know. But that's what happened, right?
That is what happened, yeah.
Where's the stenographer? I appreciate everybody's time. It would have been longer, but you addressed all the issues and all the holes that I've seen and found. Thank you.
Mark, I just ask it from a submission standpoint, is there a, is there a determination of what has to be included in a submission versus what is missing?
Yes.
In order for it to be deemed submitted?
Yes, but our ordinance is very, not, not very clear as to what's.
Very general on that?
Very general. That's why they're able to submit stuff without like a traffic impact study, preliminary stormwater reports.
Right.
That is one of our future projects when we're done with some of our other existing projects.
Right, okay. So as far as there's not a, there's not a set forth criteria that you check certain boxes, and unless these are done, it can't.
Correct. Right now it's very basic.
Okay, okay.
Like three things.
Okay. And there's other towns that I think they do do it differently.
Yes, and we're looking to do that just for this particular reason.
I can say from personal experience, different townships do it differently.
Okay. And then my second question is, from a, from a tabling versus a vote standpoint, right? Is that voting whether to recommend, agreeing to table versus that? Has the applicant asked for it to be tabled?
No, the applicant hasn't asked for it to be tabled.
Okay.
They are here today.
Okay, yep, yeah, okay. And then my second question would be then, is it within the planning commission's purview to decide whether to agree to table versus making the recommendation?
It is absolutely within your purview to decide one way or the other.
Okay.
The reason why we are recommending table is just to give them time to answer the questions, but they only have 90 days from, basically from today.
Yes, right, okay, yep. And then obviously, I mean, just for some of the comments coming from the audience, is that obviously whatever, whatever is voted up or down on any piece of land, whatever piece of land it is, people can submit different plans. They can, whatever, something is turned down, people can, it's their land, they can submit a different application for something different. If one thing doesn't pass, since it's their land, they can start all over again, and they can submit, and then they're submitting pursuant to whatever the zoning ordinance is in place at the time they submit, right?
Correct, correct.
So audience, just so you know, whatever happens tonight, this is just a recommendation to council. So council will hear this next, and hopefully the date for that will be communicated.
I just have one more comment.
I'm sorry, ma'am, you're going to have to come up again and introduce yourself.
And then we do need to let the applicant speak as well.
Are you, as the planning commission, taking into account both the nursing home and their two separate developments?
No, this is only the, this townhouse community.
And we have to consider them separately, so we have to.
Well, how can you consider it separately if they're both dumping onto East McMurray?
That's all part of, that's all part of an engineering process. We have a traffic engineer here. We'll get into that.
But we look at the two of them separately and determine whether they meet the criteria on a separate basis.
I'm Andrew Zeholsky. I'm the applicant. I currently live in Upper St. Clair 1640 Waterson Court, but I was a resident here for 13 years. Again, this was the community, when I moved to Pittsburgh after finishing my graduate training for my first job, this is the community I grew, you know, that my kids were born in, my kids went to school here, you know, and I, you know, although I'm not physically living here right now, I still have very strong ties to this community, you know, friends and family. Dr. Sorrelli, you know, is my dermatologist and in time's past friend, which I want to address because your concern about the access is really the access for where the nursing home is going to hit, which it's going to hit kind of in front of where Katina's office is. Not, your office is right across land that's owned by John Yacko, which kind of cuts out part of my land. But the access from the nursing home is going to be a little bit off to the side in front of Katina's office. Again, I purchased this land in 2015, back when the township was underdeveloping its, every 10-year comprehensive plan. At the time, it was communicated to me that the township felt that it was very much in need of aging in place, aging in place developments, that again, we have a ton of single family homes on half acre lots. You're getting more of those over on Frobe Farm, you know, but we have a lot of people who are the sandwich generation, have, again, like me, I had young kids in the school district, but also parents, my kids' grandparents, who are getting older, who we wanted to bring in. And that this property was specifically rezoned for that purpose. And again, in multiple conversations with Ed Zook, you mentioned, you said you've been hearing about this for four years. These conversations have actually been going on for nine years with Ed Zook, that this was a need, and I specifically bought two parcels of land to try to, you know, consolidate it and do something that the community needed. Again, at the time I bought it, my wife's stepfather had passed away from ALS, and my wife's mother was living in Poughkeepsie, New York, had no one, you know, she's like, I'm getting older, you know, and we tried to move her here, and there really wasn't any of this type of housing available. And, you know, I was talking to Ed Zook, and he's like, well, actually, we're rezoning property for that. And I was like, okay, let me, let me help with that. So I have always wanted to be responsive to the planning commission, I have always wanted to be responsive to the community. And these plans, as you said, we, I have been working with them nine years, you started hearing about them four years ago, then.
I heard when I moved in my house nine years ago.
Let's let him finish.
Then there were, you know, delays having to do with COVID, delays having to do with COVID. A concept was brought to me by, you know, I was trying to develop the whole thing, but a concept was brought to me by a developer to, again, try to do this as a transitions of care, you know, some aging place and a nursing home, brought in a second developer, and a little bit, I am a victim here of that the two developers were kind of going separately and did, you know, and basically, you know, we're not cross-talking again about traffic connections, we're not cross-talking. And then one of my two developers discovered that, you know, way back in 1959, this little parcel was actually subdivided as five small lots. He showed a picture to the township, that they were having a dispute over whether to make this connection. One developer showed this picture to the township saying, well, you know, since these lots were subdivided off previously, we don't have to make that connection. And that started this whole snowball where it upset the planning commission that they weren't going to make this connection, and worked to spot rezon my property, because they basically rezoned my property, but other properties that are in this same zoning district were not touched. So they did this spot rezoning, which again, basically, although, again, we've been having these discussions for years and years, no formal plan had ever been submitted because we've always been trying to work with and answer all the questions and make sure what we did was, was good. When, when that happened, basically Paul Lauer rushed to, within nine days, dead before the township commission, this whole rezoning to remove the overlay. So yes, I was forced to rush in with a premature plan, and rushing with a premature plan just to get grandfathered in. My request.
Can I back up a second?
Yeah.
When you say you're forced, when I heard you just said you purchased property in 2015, that's nine years, sir.
Right.
So you were just, what were you doing all those nine years that you had to just throw off the day before? You couldn't even do a traffic study? You couldn't even do geotech? You don't even know what kind of soils there? Nine years, sir.
We have to.
Why is it submitted?
We have to.
You have nothing, we have a nine-page letter of all your conclusions.
We have, we have an older traffic study that is not pertinent to the fact that we're.
Maybe you should have spent money and did it right.
That's not pertinent to the fact that we, that we moved on to, there were changes to the nursing home, okay. In any case, we, we did rush and give a plan. So again, there have been multiple, again, you said, what have been, there have been multiple versions of this plan. There is geotech, which I believe was submitted, there was, they said the stormwater was submitted, there was stormwater that was submitted. There was an earlier traffic study which showed, there was an earlier traffic study, and again, this is, this is what the whole holdup was. Our traffic study suggested that we did not need to make a signalized intersection here. The township commission, the planning commission, would prefer to have a signalized intersection here. The developer I was working with was going back and forth for years, dealing with the signalized intersection, and again, this is what ended up happening, he ended up finding this subdivision to try to use that as an excuse not to do the signalized intersection, and then Paul Lauer didn't like it and said, let's rezon the whole thing. Again, in hindsight, that was a bad choice on part of my developer, because after hearing everyone's comments, I now agree that having a signalized intersection here is the best way to go. The fact of the matter is, if we put a signal here, as opposed to what everyone is saying, oh no, we're going to get too much traffic out there and out there, if we put a signal here, more people are going to probably come. If we put a signal here, more people are going to probably come here because it's very hard to come out Pleasant Avenue when you've got all the traffic there. It is hard to come out McNary. If you get a signalized intersection here where you know that there's going to be, you know, red lights and then a green light where everyone gets a turn, it's going to drive more of the traffic is actually from here. It's going to improve our traffic here. Also, the stop-and-go part of that is going to improve the access on McNary. It's going to improve the access on Pleasant. I want to work with the township and try to make the traffic better. The other gentleman was questioning here. Right now, again, that's a blind loop. He called it a three-way, it's not a three-way. It's a blind loop. There's only two. But if you actually make that a cross-intersection, the people coming down Crest are going to slow down when they're coming down that hill because they know they're coming to an intersection. They're not just whipping around. Our plan is to improve the traffic. The other thing is, again, although we rushed and submitted this one, after hearing all the comments about density, I'm now trying to consolidate several of these instead of four townhomes into like two patio homes. We are coming up with a plan that is going to only have 68 units instead of 88 units. I am trying to address all of the traffic issues, all of the density issues. I'm trying to make this work because I want this to be a well-liked development that improves the character of the community, not one that destroys the character of the community. I try to be rational, but again, at the same time, when I purchased the property, it was under, you know... This young lady here at the other meeting, she said she purchased her home in 2021 under the assumption that that road should stay dead end forever. I purchased this not under an assumption, under the direct instruction from township officials that this was being rezoned specifically for this purpose. And I'm trying to work with the township to have a win-win for both of us that improves the character of the community, but is not, you know, is not harmful to the community, but also allows me to at least recoup what I paid to buy in here under those premises. The bottom line is, I agree that this plan needs work. I agree that, again, because I had two different developers, we're working on different aspects of it and weren't cross-talking, but yes, there were earlier traffic studies. We just, again, now that we know where the nursing home is and where their connection is, we're repeating the traffic study. I just believe that I need some additional time. So my request is, A, yes, I would like to request that the plan be tabled so that we have time to work with the township, the township, in order to get things done right to specifically improve what's going on in East McMurray. And further, I would like to request the table. And give me time to address what everyone needs. I'm working on it. I just need time.
Thank you. Any planning commissioners thought?
I have a question going back to what this body has to do or is relegated to do. We can deny it, deny a recommendation to council. We can approve a recommendation, or we can recommend the council, the plan, go forward, or we can deny it, or we can table it if, you know, somebody seconds and we vote on it. We can do all three, correct?
Correct.
If we deny it, will it not go to council?
No.
It's just a recommendation.
So the applicant, well, I just want to hear any thoughts, any recommendations on a motion?
Is there any additional discussion?
I don't have anything additional from what I said before. I mean, I don't know if anybody else had any comments.
Do you have any comments, Charlie?
No, I'm ready.
I mean, I may be going alone here, but I recommend, the planning commission does not recommend this to a council.
I'll second that.
I think do we need to, since he has made a formal request to table, do we need to vote on approving or denying the table and then make a, that it be tabled? Because he's made a request now on the floor that it be tabled. I don't think that would be a recommendation. He's asked this body to table it. We would vote up or down if I'm, if I'm, we would vote up or down on tabling.
Then we give a reason why we're denying anything that would...
Well, I'd be happy to withdraw the motion.
Go ahead.
I just withdraw my motion. If you'll withdraw your second.
Yeah, withdraw.
Okay. You want to make another motion on the table?
Could you word that for show?
So I'm going to make a recommendation that I'm going to make a motion that the planning commission deny the request by the applicant that the plan be tabled until the next month.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So we officially deny the table. Do you want to take some other actions? Do you want to take action on the plan too?
So we would have to now take action on the plan? And so now we would be recommending approval or just recommending denial?
Well, I'm going to go back to my motion now and recommend that the planning commission does not recommend this to council.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. So there's no table, and we're recommending the planning commission, recommend to the council that they do not approve this. They'll be up to council.
So the next council meeting will...
Is when, Mark?
Next meeting is Monday, but that's not going to be on the agenda.
Yeah, I'm not sure when it's sort of...
Yeah.
Okay.
I apologize.
The applicant will need to get some information together. And I'm sure they're not going to want to go to the very next because they have some work to do. We'll be looking to...
In the June, that's probably... We saw that scoping meeting coming up, so we can...
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of information that needs to be scoped out first. We're talking second meeting in June at the earliest, and that would imagine it would probably be...
Just keep in touch with staff to figure out the date of the meeting.
They can still get their questions answered, or they can get all their things together and keep...
Anything else?
No.
All right. Meeting adjourned.